... planning board to order. Can we please have a roll call? This is secretary, the secretary.
Oh, me? I don't know the whole thing yet.
I'll go down through it, Boyle. All right, Stephen Bishop, present. George Hansen.
Present.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Terry Doughty.
Here.
Crystal Ireland is not in yet. Jay DeRoz.
Here.
Mark Nissluss.
Here.
Review and acceptance of the minutes from the August 2nd, 2022 meeting.
Motion be accepted as written.
Second. How on favor? Chairs report. We have none. Code enforcement officers report.
I've been on vacation, so not a lot to report. Council approved our marijuana regulation stuff, so that's been put through, as well as the fee schedule changes. So those are all in place now.
Did they make any changes to any of those amounts? Or did they leave them the way they were?
They left everything as it was.
So they did?
Yep. In fact, Jordan from Island Herb came and asked what the fees were going to be. And when they told him, he said, oh, those are very reasonable.
Okay.
So he was happy with that. Trying to think what else. That's probably it for the moment.
Okay.
Anything on whole oceans? Just a quick question.
Nothing new.
Okay, thank you.
Other than they're looking to put some signs up. They're in, they've got offices in May Maritime Building now.
Oh.
Because the building next door was sold, so.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yep.
Yeah, because I thought they were going to take down the cream tank up there.
That is on hold because the contractor told them if they wanted to put a tank like that in in the future, it would cost them over a million dollars. Whereas if they wanted to put a liner or whatnot in that one and use it, it would cost them about $50,000. And so they said, are you sure you want us to tear this down? Because it might make sense to have it inspected one more time and see if this is something you can use, so.
Good, thank you.
So it's a holding pattern.
Makes sense to hold then.
Yep.
All right. Unfinished business. A subdivision application review, Bucks Mills Village, Mike and Melissa Osborne. And that includes a public hearing. Do we have anything that the board would like to say on that as we start before we open the public hearing?
Did we clear up our issue? We had on a butter that may have had an issue.
Yep, I see they're here tonight, so I guess if that's on your mind, I guess we'll open up the public hearing in regard regards to that. If anyone has anything that they would like to say, now is your time to address the board. We will officially open the public hearing for that issue.
You sure you don't want to say anything? It's a public hearing. It's on the record.
All right. We will close the public hearing on that. We have no one, no one has any questions or needs to say anything? We'll close that. Does anyone from the board have any questions or anything before we start going down through the findings of fact?
Well, I do have a page of questions. I know that the gentleman, I can't remember your name.
Cody.
Cody was concerned for his hunting as in a butter.
Yep.
And I was wondering why lot 11 couldn't be moved to the other side.
Do you have the ability to bring this up on the screen for everybody, Luke?
Give me a second.
Okay, thank you.
It's in here somewhere.
Well, I think that you all know what I'm going to be talking about. Lot 11 here, why couldn't be moved to the other side for right now? And be part of the process, I believe you want to do in five years. That at least takes that piece away from Cody's side and brings it over. At least I believe that's how I'm reading this.
Well, the house is going to be on lot 11, it's going to be near the road, and it's going to be inside the line. Just put off the issue in the future.
Yeah, it would, put it off. That was my point.
I like it going with what we have. I understand his concerns. I hunt and fish all my life, too. But I'm not proposing any restrictions on lot 11.
Okay.
The bed stream is down along the bottom of that lot.
Yes.
And the high ground is up near the road.
Yep.
It is.
Yeah, I can see that.
So the house would most likely be fairly close to the road, which is a couple hundred feet from that property line.
Where the cursor is on the screen now, where the house would be, that type of way.
Yeah.
But that would not stop a shed from going in the back or whatever if they wanted to put a shed back there, as long as it's concrete pad, if I understand what you're, what you have. So I'm just want to make sure. I'm not a hunter any longer. I haven't hunted in years, so, so, so I'm just trying to.
So I have a question.
Go ahead and walk right up to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Thanks. I'm Mike. So I don't know hunting rules. Is it just a dwelling or is it any building?
Structure. That's the wording in the ordinance, is a structure.
Okay. So it is wet down there. I can't imagine anybody would want to use it, but you never know, I guess.
Well, that's, yeah, that was my thought on it. For now, I just thought if it could be delayed for five years, at least it gives them five years.
Honestly, I don't know. What's that property line? Does that have?
This line back here is 208 feet.
Yeah.
So from there up here has got to be all of that and more.
Yeah, more than 208.
Well, yeah, well, once you put the house on there and the garage, I mean, I'm assuming that's what's going to be there. It'll probably be to the side of the hill. I don't know. I'm looking there. I don't know the land that well. I think it's going to be pushed just a little bit back. But you're a contractor, you would know better than I on that.
Well, the test pitch for the septic here.
Yep.
So absolutely assume the house is going to be closer to the road and the leak trail would be down and behind.
Okay, so he's got to, the house would have to go to the top just to have the, the lines gravity feeded.
Yep, have gravity feeded.
Got it? Okay. All right. Good explanation on that.
I don't know if we got to make a rule or something that works, you know? I'll give a little, you give a little. What do I have to give? Why do I have to give?
Well, that's nothing we're going to get into if we're not going to, if we're not going to be able to sort that out. I was hoping that in the, in the time of a month that something might have magically taken place. But obviously, since it hasn't, then we'll continue on with that process. And if we have any more questions, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any other questions?
Did we get any feedback from any of the other drones from the notification?
Thank you. Byron Mitten is here tonight. He is across the street, directly across the street from where the entrance would be, or very close to that. He had some concerns and I think Mike and Melissa went down and visited him and looked at where the entrance would be and, and addressed his concerns and everything's good, I guess. I haven't heard anything from anybody else.
Okay.
There aren't, there aren't a lot of them anyway, but, but everyone received a notification.
Okay.
I have more questions if that's.
Go right ahead.
I don't know. Nobody has any other questions? Okay.
It might be the same as yours, so go ahead.
After getting the subdivision on C, we have a reserved land up to 10% that it says. As you go through and you read this, Luke, I believe in his email to us, said he would explain it to us. So I'm all ears.
I did?
Yes.
It said, the way it reads, the board must require, must require subdivision of more than four lots to reserve 10% open space or recreational use. That's 8.14.
Yeah, up to.
Up to 10%.
Right, and then you, as you go back, as you go through it, it gives a little bit clearer that it expects to have something there.
Right, I understand.
Okay, so.
So we went back, Steve and I, through, I don't know, a bunch of subdivision applications from prior years, looking to see what they've done in the past.
Before 2018?
Right.
Because this took effect on 2018.
Yeah, but that was in there before that.
This was?
Yeah.
The comprehensive plan that shows the approval on 2018?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, so I'm trying, I'm trying to understand this from that full plate time forward. That's all.
There's going to be a, yeah, that there's going to be a date right on the top of the page, right there. There we go, that's what we're looking for. 7/5/2018.
Right, 7/5/2018. So I'm trying to make sure that whatever we're doing moving forward, that we're dotting the I, crossing the T. I don't think anybody's looking to have 10% set aside. You know, but I don't want to speak for the board.
What I was referring to was section 9.1, or sorry, 9.14 in the subdivision ordinance, not the comprehensive.
Yes. You have 9.2, let's see, you have 9.14.2 that you have to look at, 9.14.
So 9.14 is binding, because that is subdivision ordinance and that's what we're, that's what we're tasked with enforcing and comparing the subdivision to.
Right.
The comprehensive plan, to my knowledge, and I'm, I don't believe is binding in that way. It's a suggestion. It's what we would like to see happen in the future.
Right, but we can only go by what we have here.
Right.
And, and read what we have in front of us.
Which, which one are you talking about?
I'm just talking about this one right here, subdivision, section C on subdivisions.
Okay, so 9.14.
Yeah, 9.14, I'm, I'm on it right now.
Which says includes an appropriately sized area dedicated to open space or recreational use. An area designated for municipal use, as may be required.
Right, municipal, which, right, could be for an area for snow when they're plowing. It could be for mailboxes. It could be almost any of those things.
We received a new map this evening. Is, have there been any amendments to this, this map from, since our last meeting?
Just taking the illustration of the future lots, we took that off.
Okay.
Add a couple lines to the signature block.
Okay, so there has not been any sort of redirection for anything for any open space or any sort of recreational use or?
No, not at all.
Okay.
So the, the sentence where it says must include up to 10%, that's from comprehensive, correct?
Yes. It's, yes, not the subdivision.
Not the subdivision.
Correct. So, yes, that's 8.14. It's on page 19 here. We're up to page 20. Yeah, you're in the subdivision ordinance right now. Okay, so 8.14 is reserved land. Yes, and that's, and that's where it says. Oh, and must is in there, so.
Okay, so that's not comprehensive plan, that is subdivision.
Yes, that's subdivision.
So, all right, so that is the part that I said was in the older, older versions. Of course, this one was approved in 18, but the older versions, like if you look at what was revised, that's not one of the things that changed. So that went back, that's been in there a long time.
Right, so this right here, I think the confusing thing about this one, it said, the first sentence, the planning board may require, next sentence, the planning, the board must require.
Right.
Right, so, so there's two, there's a may and a must in there. The must is kind of make you think that it's a requirement.
Well, it starts off with four lots, if I remember correctly.
Yes, if anything more than four lots.
Four lots, which this is.
Right.
Right.
So.
So. But then it, where it puts up to 10%, so that's, it's kind of, it's confusing.
But that would confuse me. I mean, I'm just going to speed my mind. I mean, that would be insane.
Absolutely.
5.7 acres.
We're not here to, we're not here to do that. That's not the intent. The intent is to understand what we have.
Right, but that would take away two lots from their subdivision.
Yes, and you made that clear in an email to us.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if that's in the record or not, but you did make that very clear.
So, so anyways, we looked at the previous subdivisions and there was, it's never been done, even though it says it in the ordinance.
I did speak with the previous code enforcement officer and he did tell me that at the bottom of Royal Ridge, there is a section of reserved land that's for water drainage and water runoff. That's right there, that's right at the very foot of Royal Ridge, that's right next to Central Street.
Is that actually noted on the plan?
And the size of that, I didn't find it, but I, that's what he said. So I, looking at that, that's a very small portion of land that's for stormwater runoff. But based on that, does the board have something that they would like to see in these plans that would be an open space or recreational space? Or have any idea on an amount or something that, that would be reasonable for this type of situation?
Are there any, like, if the town takes ownership of the road in a few years, is there like some space for snow to, for the plow, to like facilitate? I mean, that's probably.
Right away, 60 feet wide.
Okay.
Plenty of, plenty of road. 20-foot road and shoulders, ditches and holes, so.
On the shoulders, will it be crushed rock or anything, or?
Rather.
People be comfortable walking on it then?
Sure.
Okay.
So is this stormwater buffer, what he's talking about, which is basically a ditch on the side of the road?
Yeah. Yeah.
We've got some stormwater buffers, you can see the blue, that's what the green at the north side is.
I mean, if the town's going to take over the road, essentially that road is reserved land. 5.47 acres.
I don't think that's, that's a good point, George. I like that.
There's another section on roads, too.
Yeah, it's another section on it. But if they're making a wider shoulder, that may help us here. Yeah, okay.
So it also, and I'm just throwing this out there, but it said, in 9.14, it said, open space or recreational use.
Yes.
Well, they're.
Walking is recreational use.
Yep. I was thinking also that the snowmobile trail.
Good thought.
Is going to be rerouted through there and they've already said that they want to reroute it and make it better and.
Is the trail on here?
It's not, but they didn't know that that was something that, it's just something that they were just going to do, is what, right? So.
Okay.
I don't know if that would count, if that would help. I don't, I don't know really what to do, because this is not something that I.
Well, we may be finding answers as we talk about the shoulder and stuff, because I know Mark was very concerned about sidewalks and safety, as we all would be. So I have another question, if you're ready to move on to the next.
Well, the, the one other thing that I will say is when that Royal Ridge was being reviewed, there's a letter in the record from former town manager Roger Raymond to the planning board stating that the town would not, under any circumstances, take on any parkland or anything that they would have to maintain or, or do anything with. So if we did require some type of reserved land, that begs the question, who pays taxes on it? Who maintains it?
Right, and we, all we want to do is make sure we have clarity on it.
Yep.
That's, that's all.
And I'm just trying out.
And you're doing your job. Thank you. Question on, and this is a silly question, the road for speed limit, do we know what the speed limit would be in there?
There's a section in the ordinance that describes line of sight versus speed limit requirements, so I think we would have to determine it based on line of sight at each point in the road, or?
Since we have some police officers on the board.
Well, since you asked.
Doesn't it default to 35 if it's not posted?
All right, and then it depends on if it's dirt.
Then again, if it's defined as a public way or not.
Right.
You know, and it's not a public way until the town takes it over.
Right, and if it's a public access way.
That's just a private road until a point whenever the town says, we will take it over and maintain it.
Right, so it'd be defined as a public access way.
And it's paved.
Yep.
Well, it would be paved once, once if the town takes it over, not before, probably. They got a five-year plan here.
If the town hasn't taken over, I wouldn't think it would be up to the town to post anything. If it's still a private road.
Right.
I'm assuming it would be up to the property owners.
Then I would consult the law at the time when we take it over, because those change every year.
Well, I, I thought maybe 25 or something, but you could, but I don't know. I have no clue on that. I just thought I would bring it up because it looks like a nice road.
Yeah.
The way it's laid out.
This piece up here is almost an oval, I can see.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking we could start a race, race course for snowmobiles in the winter time out there.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a sign of speed limit on Royal Ridge. I don't recall seeing one.
I don't know. I really don't. I don't remember.
My next question's on page 31. I want to say this is a very good proposal, the way this was put together. And I really, I really liked it. It's the first time I really looked at it after the meeting. But on page 31, the picture below, when you're there.
Of the what, the areas?
Yes, yes. I, I think I see a pipe there or something in that, I, I don't know. I couldn't quite tell, because I know there was a right away for water at one time. And so I'm looking, I'm going, did they dig that up? Is that the pipe? I, I don't, it's either a branch or it's.
It's like a stick to the.
Yeah, it could be a stick in there on page 31, lower, lower, lower section. It looks like it was dug out, though. And that's why I was looking at it.
Is that a track?
Yeah, is that a track? Maybe a track?
Because it looks like it's on the side here, too.
So, so this pipe that runs, I just wanted to understand, the pipe that runs under that, it's been abandoned, hasn't it?
That's a stick.
Okay, but the pipe, Luke, Luke, we're gumping on that. It, it's the pipe that runs.
The pipeline.
Yes. Is that, has that been abandoned?
It's still there. It sticks up out of the ground.
Oh, it sticks up out of the ground?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's huge.
Oh.
It's like a 24-inch diameter.
I didn't see any pictures of that pipe in here.
Borders are property.
Oh, it, oh, it bore, it's right on the.
Pipe is the border. That's the way they describe it.
Thank you. Okay, now I have a clear image of that. Before, I was trying to look and I'm going, oh, maybe that's the pipe, you know? Sorry.
So it's three-foot diameter.
So the snowmobile trail follows the pipeline from Silver Lake going over towards Alamosic. And then if you want to go into town.
Yes.
And it's not safe across Silver Lake, that's when you would use a trail that would cross this land in order to get to town safely without crossing unsafe ice.
Okay.
So that's where the snowmobile trail comes in.
All right, so my next question, did all the departments turn in their paperwork?
They've all responded. I don't have letters. I have emails.
Well, my next one has to do with the fire department.
Yes.
Did they say anything? Public safety?
They said they had no concerns.
Right. So where is the nearest water source for a fire? Silver Lake is the nearest.
Well.
That's way out of the Hydrant district, so I'm assuming it would be.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the nearest.
Yeah.
Probably coming back in Central Street, wherever it would be.
It was only a question?
No, that's a good question. I think it's either, it's either the nearest hydrant on Central Street, which would be closer to town than the, than the tra, uh, public works, because the water doesn't go out that far.
Uh, there's one at Broadway and Central. I don't know if there's one north of that.
So it would need to be that or Silver Lake, which there's no good way to get to Silver Lake, other than maybe in Mike Cause's subdivision.
Well, I know we had a fire way out. God, it's got to be like five, six, seven months ago.
Oh, out on, way out.
Way, I'm talking right on the edge, and it took forever to get out there. And then trying to get water to it was very difficult for Bucks Board. So I was just asking the question because, you know, you want to make sure you can get water to a fire if one should occur.
There's actually was two out there, one a couple years before that.
That I heard, yeah, yeah. So, and that was, I think it was a total loss, because they couldn't get to it in time.
Yeah, they both were.
Yep. All right. Okay, so now I'm going to come to my last one, I believe. And that has to do with underground power. I realize we don't want to do it for the whole thing, but I would like to advocate underground power from the road, from the pole at the road to the house. I see no reason, I think it's a safety issue, I think aesthetically it looks better, but safety. I just think it should be done. But that's mine. You folks all have a vote. I think I'm done at the moment.
This quote that you got is for doing everything underground?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, they actually got a quote for that. I was wondering. I got to look at it. Yeah, well, I don't think you would go through the whole thing. Oh, it's only $629,000.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's only a back pocket change. And I think going from the pole to the house.
From the pole to the house?
Yeah, in other words, when the poles come around.
Yep.
Where the nearest pole is to the house.
Should be buried.
Buried. I, I'd like to see it buried. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be buried. We're not talking a lot of distance. And I think it's just safety, public safety, it just, no ladder's going to touch it, you know?
I guess my two cents would be, probably the property owners would like to see it buried too, but, but for $700,000.
No, 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 that's, no, 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 we're not talking, that's, that's the whole thing. We're not talking that.
Well, you want, you say just to the pole.
Yeah, in other words, the pole is here, the house is here. I'm not talking about bringing it on.
What about the other houses with the other poles?
Where the other poles are. Wherever the pole is, I mean, you're talking big lots here.
So you're saying from the, from the road into the first pole, where the lot stopped?
No, no.
I guess I'm not following you.
Okay.
I think it'd be poles all the way around the street.
Right, there'd be poles all the way around the street, all the way.
Okay.
So you're going to put a house here.
Yeah.
So the nearest pole to the house. Not, not.
Are you following this?
Yeah. Not, not coming in underground.
Okay.
They've already taken the time, thank you for doing that, by the way. Uh, but from coming from the pole to the house only. Not...
Each individual?
Yeah, each individual, not, not from here in, but the poles. How many poles do you think will be?
Nineteen.
Nineteen poles? So, nineteen coming off of one of those poles to the house. Yeah. I think it's a, I think it's a doable. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be doable. So, but that's, again, in discussion.
Do you have any comment on that or thoughts?
Um, my only concern would be, when you do a property, you have to sell the lines back to CMP.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure a hundred percent about underground, if CMP would cover from that pole to the house, or if that now falls on the homeowner. I don't know.
So, anyway, that, that's, that was my thought. And will there be streetlights? Well, I'm just, I, I just thought I'd ask. It's a big project, it's a nice project, you know? So, I mean, just looking it over. I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm done at the moment. I think I've talked long enough.
Okay, I did have a question that I might have missed, but where, where the mailboxes gonna go? What, is, are they gonna be down at the foot of the road, at the entrance? Or are they gonna be on, on individual lots?
That's a lot.
Yeah, it was, too. You know, I had each house a lot.
And suddenly we can ask what a mail carrier preference would be.
Okay.
And I don't know what the preference is for a mail carrier. It is to have them group at the...
They're putting in group boxes nowadays, in most areas.
So, the reason for that, for that question, is that if the town is going to adopt this road as part of your plan later on, there are certain areas of town and certain mailboxes that it's easier for them to plow around. And they can get their wings underneath the style of mailbox that hangs. There's actually a DOT specification for them, for those. So, I was wondering how unreasonable or reasonable it would be to just put in your covenants, in the event that people were gonna have their individual mailboxes, to make their mailboxes to that specification, because I feel like it would help keep the road wider.
Yeah.
They could put their plow wings right underneath it and just keep going. It would save people's mailboxes and it would keep the road wider. It would keep it easier for people to walk, it would just make things a lot more streamlined and easier on the town as well later on if they inherited that. Is that something that you think could be somewhat reasonable to add to your list of covenants?
Do you have a reference for that DOT or can you send a link?
I can get that for you. I had asked the Highway Foreman to be here tonight, in case we had any questions about that type of thing. But, yeah, we can, we can find that. Yep, I remember we, we've referenced it in the past with people that have built illegal mailboxes in the past. So, all right, does the board have any more questions?
One last question.
Okay.
You know how I am.
I do.
Will there be any trees along the road that if they went down would block the road?
I suppose that could happen anywhere.
No, no, it could happen anywhere, I'm just, I don't, I'm not familiar with the land at all. I didn't go up and look or walk it.
The law of the big tree will cut, but there's still some of the tiny trees scattered around.
Well, where it's sixty-foot wide, or going to be, it would take a pretty big tree to block it, I think, at this point. So, that's why I was asking if it was...
Once you cut it back for the ditches and the two-way poles.
Probably nothing.
Wouldn't say that it wouldn't ever get blocked?
That isn't, that is a nice wide road.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good. I mean, we just saw that young kid that died at the campground a couple of months ago, because the road was blocking, it took forever to get to the campground. You may have seen that on the news.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
So, that, those thoughts go through my head. I think the chairman is concerned about those things as well.
Yep, leads down to the, you know...
Okay. Okay. Anyone else, all set?
Okay, we're gonna go through our findings of fact. We're all set. So, the first sections are just to determine whether documentation was submitted that you think meets the burden of proof, or if it's not applicable.
Sure.
And then the next section after that is the conclusions.
This, this looks like it's a little bit different format than what we've had in the, in the past. My question is, are we, does the board feel like we've discussed this enough? We can just go through this once? Or do we need to discuss every topic and then, and then go back through it for approval?
Well, the only thing, the only thing I think I have concerns about is the, again, it's public safety. I think we addressed those. Is the land that's set aside or not set aside, or whatever. That was the only other thing, to be clear.
The, the reserve land?
The reserve, just to be clear. I don't want to stop the project. I just wanted to understand that piece.
Okay. We don't have clarification on that reserve land right now. Can you two come up here with, to the, to the microphone and talk to us about that for a second? Does anyone on the board have a proposal for this reserve land, uh, section of the ordinance that's been being discussed that's unclear? Does anyone have a?
Um, is it necessary here? I mean, it's a pretty large lots, so that's, that would be my question.
I agree with that. I feel that the lots themselves are very large. And if someone wanted to do something, they can, they've got plenty of, they have acres, literally, plural, to be able to...
What's the smallest lot?
One point two-five. And that would be in the future.
Yeah. Well, we're only looking at this, these first fourteen here. The first fourteen was the smallest lot.
Well, one is one point six-four, or something, or a lot here.
Okay. Is the snowmobile, uh, on this side, on your property?
Comes down the pipeline.
Yes.
And then somewhere about that bend, it turns.
I mean, it looks like if it's, if they're doing the snowmobile trail, that looks like it takes up quite a bit of land. I mean, I'm looking here, I don't know if that's the pipe, or if that's the true snowmobile, I just don't...
Yeah, I think that just, you know, gives the, the right way, or at least...
The right-of-way for the pipe only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely the trail.
We could maybe work with Steve to define the amount of land that is covered by that snowmobile trail.
Well...
As it traverses our property.
Okay.
That would be reserved for our...
And, of course, the people buying these lots would have to be informed. By the way.
Yeah.
It could get a little noisy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I had a snowmobile trail go through my place in Los Saco. It was rather interesting, I didn't know it was there.
Do we have, uh, any motion or any sort of approval from the board that the, uh, snowmobile trail is enough?
Well, we don't know what that trail is yet.
Land to... We don't know what the amount is yet.
No, but I think the walkway, if Mark's satisfied with the ability for people to walk, the road, I believe, had to be what, forty? Was it forty feet? But it's, no, I know it's sixty. You're making it, you're making it sixty. What was required?
I think three rods, which is forty-nine and a half feet, is the minimum.
So, the board may require fifty or sixty-six foot wide. Chapter ten, Roads and Streets, Rules and Regulations, Department of Transportation. I don't have that chapter.
I don't think we have that kind of time.
I'm just trying to find that place for us, so we can say we're good to go.
Is the board comfortable with continuing to move on, or do we need an amount? I need someone to say something.
I don't think we need a specific amount. I'm comfortable moving on.
Yeah. I agree, I think the amount of whatever that snowmobile trail is gonna wind up being, and the fact that the road is wider than we had anticipated is...
Well, we hope it's wider. That's what we're trying to find out now.
Is gonna be adequate for that. Just to fulfill our obligation on the, uh, on this ordinance and for the reserve land scenario, Luke, can you just put a note that we make, uh, our preemptive potential approval a conditional based on the redirecting of that snowmobile trail? On the completion of that sending mail? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sound reasonable. All right, anyone has any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, yeah. Uh, correct. Correct. All right, Luke, you were giving us the, uh, the breakdown of the findings of fact. Please continue.
Well, just that the, uh, first section, standard is to go through and see if they've provided all the relevant documentation for those things.
Okay.
Or if they don't apply.
Okay.
And then, once you've done that, you can go to the next section, which is, does the documentation meet the requirements to satisfy you and approve it?
Okay, very good.
That's when you take the votes, is on the criteria.
All right, we'll go through them. Okay, so we will start with section eight point two, lots and blocks. Has relevant documentation been submitted by the applicant?
Move that in, Helen.
The planning board found that this standard to be applicable and relevant documentation has been provided. Well, on paper of that, are we voting on both, Luke, or are we gonna be able to streamline this? We'll be able to streamline this. Relevant, uh, section eight point three, streets. Relevant documentation submitted by the applicant for, uh, the planning board found that this standard is not applicable, or we have relevant documentation for streets?
Yes.
All right.
Move it in?
Yep, move it in.
Traffic and access management, eight point four. Relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant? Yes, no?
We didn't have any, anything back from Public Works, or?
Public Works had no issues. Fire department had no issues, police had no issues. Superintendent of Schools wanted a turnaround, and when I explained that there's a loop, so the turnaround's not required, he was good with that.
Is the loop going in on this, this time?
My understanding was the entire road was gonna be put in.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay.
If not, then a turnaround would be needed until it is.
Eight point five, utilities. Relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant?
So... I mean, there're gonna be individual steps, so, as well, so that's all there.
Correct.
And street utilities, you know, it's gonna be our...
Yeah. I feel that's been a major topic of discussion. I feel like they did a lot of research on the utilities and, and found, uh, found out a lot about what's not feasible. Any other comments on utilities? Do we feel they've provided us with acumen, uh, excuse me, with, uh, adequate documentation for utilities?
Yes.
Think so.
Groundwater, relevant documentation submitted by the applicant?
A whole plan of...
All right.
There was a bunch of information.
Very good. Wastewater, relevant documentation submitted by the applicant?
Yep.
Do we feel that's applicable? Solid waste? I don't know if we find that applicable based on the...
It's, it's just the trans...
Sure, yes.
Yeah.
Something individuals.
Yeah, it's gonna be a...
That would be more applicable if this goes like a apartment house, or something like that.
All right, we'll find solid waste not applicable. Erosion control. Do we feel relevant documentation has been provided?
Absolutely.
Buffers, relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant for buffers?
I think they did an excellent job on the buffers. You can see them highlighted. It looked pretty good to me.
Okay. And relevant document, uh, excuse me, natural resources. Relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant for natural resources? Historic and scenic areas.
Well, I want to know what the view is like on odd eleven.
Do we find it applicable?
No. Not, not applicable.
No, not applicable. And flood hazard areas, relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant?
Yes.
Reserve land. We just discussed that in length. Are we satisfied with that? Do we feel that there's enough documentation on reserve land?
The snowmobile trail, is there an addendum for that, or will there be? I'd put down conditional upon snowmobile trail. I'm not sure what you want for documentation, or how that would be done. I think as long as it's noted, so that we can go, come back to the record. I think that's all you need, really. Okay.
I don't think that, uh, I don't think it's worth holding it up over an amount where they're in agreement to do it, and their engineer finds a feasible answer to the, to the situation.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Okay. Uh, financial and technical capacity. Relevant documentation has been submitted by the applicant?
I did receive a letter while I was on vacation from their bank, saying that they have the funding needed to do this.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get that to me.
Yeah, I, this is why we go through this list, because I said that, saw that, and said, well, that's, I don't remember. Zoning and land use. Relevant documentation submitted by the applicant?
That is what it is.
Very good. Cluster development.
It's not...
Not applicable. Mobile home parks, not applicable. All right. Conclusions. Before a subdivision may be approved, the, a planning, the planning board must conclude, based on their review and development standards of section eight, as, as documented above, the proposed subdivision will meet the criteria identified in section nine, Appendix C, as applicable. Criterion one was lots and blocks. The proposed subdivisions. Subdivision contains lots that are appropriately laid out and are adequate size to support the intended use. If required, be arranged in blocks. Such lots are arranged to fit the topographical and geographical character of the land and are safe and convenient to access.
Move that, uh, we make a positive finding.
Second.
In criterion one.
All right, all in favor? Very good. Two, streets. The proposed subdivision will comply with the minimum construction requirements for any new street that is proposed for the subdivision, and will comply with the minimum construction requirements for any structural improvements and, excuse me, for any structural improvements the applicant is required to perform on any public street or public easement utilized for access to the subdivision.
So, there's nothing that they're being required on the public street? Current public street?
Correct.
It's just the new road?
Correct. And that would fall into what we've discussed.
Mm-hmm.
With the width and the mailboxes and so on and so forth. Anyone else have any? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. Traffic and access management. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed. Has received approval from the Department of Transportation for driveways or entrances subject to Title twenty-three, MRSA seven oh four, and any rules adopted under that section, if applicable, and will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public ways in any adjoining municipality if any part of the subdivision is located in that municipality.
Move for positive finding?
Second.
All in favor? Utilities. The proposed subdivision will be provided with required utilities for each lot. Do we have a motion?
Motion for positive finding?
I second.
All in paper. Groundwater. The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonability for, for this, excuse me, foreseeable needs of the subdivision, will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply if one is to be utilized, and will not, alone, in conjunction with existing activities, adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
Do we know how deep the wells are gonna be there?
That once they get drilling, they'll figure it out.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Good luck.
I had a six-hundred-foot well at one time.
I'd guess like fifty to six-hundred, somewhere in there.
I've been there.
I know, yeah.
I didn't know if they knew or had a, had a thought on that. That was all.
Do you?
The only reference I have is the, uh, main geological well survey database that looks at wells in the existing area.
Yeah.
But I don't really think that you can draw definitive conclusions about the depth of nearby wells that you might find on the lot.
Yep.
Do you know how deep yours is? Byron?
What do you think?
Do you know how deep your well is?
How deep is it? One there at the house is just about two hundred foot. Part of the pump's at a hundred and seven.
That's not too bad.
No? Not bad at all.
That's close to saltwater.
All right, do we have a motion? Any further discussion on groundwater?
Motion to make positive finding?
I second.
I second.
All in favor? Waste water. The proposed subdivision will provide for adequate wastewater disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden to the municipal water disposal system if it is utilized.
Motion to make positive finding.
Second.
All in favor? Solid waste. We determine that not applicable? Is that correct? Erosion control. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results and will provide for adequate stormwater management.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All right, second, all in favor? You.
Actually, it's approved.
Huh?
It's actually approved of the situation.
Yeah. Buffers. The proposed subdivision will have adequate buffers to minimize the impact of development on adjacent properties and natural resources.
I still have a question about buffers.
Okay.
Uh, anyone correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Wilton has a budding lot. It only affects one lot of your development, is that correct, or is there more than one lot?
At this time.
At this time, just one.
Right. Lot 11.
Just, the only thing that concerns me that, I'd love to see your project go through, and I hope it does, but I'd also love to see him get the use of his land that he intended it to be. I can't believe you can't come to some kind of a compromise. I mean, the world is compromising today, it's full of compromises. And I'd love to see both of you get what you want and everybody go on their way and be happy. That's what I would like to see. And I, from what went on here tonight, I, I get the impression that you two have not come to a compromise.
Nobody's contacted me to discuss anything, but.
Is it, is it in the cards? I mean, is it?
In the, in, uh, in the goal of being productive here, uh, this Lot 11. Mr. Peterson touched on the idea that Lot 11 maybe get moved across the road or, uh, be moved to a different, different portion of a map to, so your immediate, uh, development doesn't border on that line.
I know.
For now, based on that one lot, which.
Which would buy him about, about five years.
Five years.
Yeah. And things could change.
Is that an unreasonable possibility or scenario?
No, that's not unreasonable. It's just, you know, we didn't pick that lot for any, you know.
Specifically for our business. Okay.
That's what the map felt, so.
Okay. Would it be possible for you, you two to decide, you and your engineer to decide right now that you could, you could do that? Is that something that could be done? I, I'm not in your plans as deep as you are.
Right.
But is that a reasonable, possible scenario to make that type of decision right now on the fly to say that the development of that lot wouldn't happen until the second phase? And you would pick another lot further down to develop instead? Is that a possibility?
So, for example, if states Lot, Lot 11 would F5.
Can we zoom out?
Five. Can we use this one here?
Yeah, F5's in, in the old.
Yeah.
Yes, right, in, yes.
I'm open to that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, how's that with you?
Uh, nothing, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
That is, that's good compromise, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
All right, is that?
I'm satisfied. If those two were satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Are you satisfied?
It doesn't mess up your paperwork.
No, no, we, we can.
How do you feel, Mr. Engineer?
I'm good. If they're good, I'm good.
Okay, you can, you can overcome that?
We got a lot, snowmobile trail anyways, so it's not a matter of not being denied, not denied anyway.
Okay. Okay, and that, and that won't, that doesn't affect a financial scenario that gets him what he wants and that doesn't dig into your, your plans real hard either?
Nope, we've already mapped all the resources, so it's just a matter of putting F5.
Okay, that buys him time.
So on 11.
Okay.
My next motion for positive finding.
All right, very good.
Thank you for that compromise. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Natural resources. Here we go. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution in making this determination. The board has considered the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to the flood plants, the nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluence, the ability of streams for disposal of effluence and the ability, excuse me, and the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations. Will not adversely affect the quality of any pond or lake or unreasonably affect the shoreline of any pond or lake whenever the subdivision is situated entirely or partially within the watershed of that pond or lake within 250 feet of any wetland, great pond, or river as defined in Title 38, Chapter 3, Subchapter 1, Article 2B. Thank you. Has identified on any maps submitted as part of the application as potential freshwater wetlands within the subdivision regardless of the size of those wetlands. Has identified on any maps submitted as part of the application any river, stream, brook within or abutting the proposed subdivision. Will not unreasonably increase a great ponds phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the subdivision. Is not located on a parcel of land that has been owned by the applicant for less than five years and which has been harvested in violation of Main Forest Service rules pertaining to liquidation harvesting and will not have, excuse me, will have no lot with a lot depth of shore frontage ratio greater than five to one for any lots in the proposed subdivision that have shore frontage on a stream, river, brook, great pond, or coastal wetland as these features are defined in Title 38, Section 4, 8B. Any questions about that?
Could you read that again?
No. I vote we accept.
Everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Thank you. Scenic and historic areas, we deemed, uh, not applicable. Flood plain management. The proposed subdivision includes a condition on the flat that requires principal structures in the subdivision to be constructed with their lowest floor, including the basement, at least one foot above the 100-year flood elevation. The plat also identifies 100-year flood elevation and flood hazard boundaries within the subdivision. These requirements are applicable if any part of the, of the subdivision is in flood hazard area as identified on the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood boundary and floodway maps and flood insurance rate maps.
They seem to have mapped it out pretty well.
I would agree.
So I vote favor. Make motion favorite.
Second.
All in favor? Reserve land. The proposed subdivision includes an approx, an appropriately sized area dedicated to open space or recreational use and an area designated for municipal use as may be required.
We don't have a clear answer. Well.
Thought we said we're gonna accept the snowmobile trail.
No, we, we are, in the, in the wide of the road. But as far as a clear answer, you know, as far as the ordinance is concerned, so I just wanna make sure that, that our code enforcement officer looks deeper into this.
Yes, we made it a condition as part of it.
Right.
The only thing that.
I'd like clarity from the town council, actually.
The town council?
Yes, the town council approves the subdivision. So they had to have gone through this. So I'm just saying that at this point, I don't wanna stop this project.
Yep.
But I would like to have clarity on it for the future. We seem to have worked our way around this one.
Yep.
So I think it's important.
Oh, I agree with that.
You know, I think it's important that we get real clarity on it for the future. And so that's why I wanted to make sure that Luke.
Okay, yes, follows up on the situation.
With the town council.
Yeah.
At the next meeting or wherever it's appropriate, uh, to make sure that we're all on the same page on this. Because.
Basically.
I, I think we're doing a dance here, so.
Change the language or adjust the language.
Exactly, just like we just did for marijuana and other things that, you know, so that nobody has to come in here and go, what's this really mean?
No, I agree with that.
Okay.
Something for us to do next month.
Yeah, that's very good.
Exactly.
But for this project specifically, you're not saying that you need the amount mapped.
No, no, we've already talked it through.
You're good with that.
And, and I believe the walkway that is being created on the side of the road.
Yep.
Is wide enough for folks to feel comfortable walking. I hope so. I'm not sure about the 55 mile an hour speed limit they're setting, but other than that.
All right.
I think we're good.
We've read reserve land, do we have a motion?
Bug in your mark.
No, I don't. No, no. It's, it's good.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move that they, uh, the project meets the reserve land criteria as partially described by the ordinance.
Pending, yeah, you can weaken pending dimensions, that's fine. That's fine. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Financial and technical capacity, the proposed subdivision will be developed by an applicant who has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this ordinance.
Vote in favor.
I didn't see any bags of money tonight.
Well, Luke said he got a letter from the bank saying, you know.
That's good, yeah, you won't see any.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Zoning and land use. The proposed subdivision conforms with all applicable provisions of the town of, uh, of Bucksport's Town Code and the town's adopted comprehensive plan.
Make a positive finding.
Second. All in favor? And cluster developments we found was not applicable. And mobile home parks we found was not applicable. Conclusion. The proposed subdivision is approved with conditions. Very good.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Are we all set?
All set.
Good.
So normally we would sign drawings tonight, but you guys are gonna have to come in and sign after he updates them with the lot change.
Yes. Perfect. All right.
So once I get those drawings, I will let you guys know to come in and sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing a good job on this. You're putting up with me.
Too late.
What's that?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
Just wanted to make sure my.
Just wanted to make sure the property.
Any of the water and the flow.
A subdivision's new. All right, moving on. New business. Don't make me get a gavel out.
Oh, good job, Mr. Peterson.
All right.
Good job.
New business, a site plan review. New commercial facility. Redmond Electric Corporation, 95 Heritage Park Road. Do we have? Do we have a presentation?
Not anything to check back on, is it?
You're off, we'll start with him, aren't ya?
Mike, here, take your stuff, you're confusing me. Oh, yeah, that's yours, that's, that's what you're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you're looking for for this. I was trying to figure out what the difference was.
No, it's not reading.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I guess I don't have much of a presentation other than this is, uh, the building, or two buildings I proposed to build on this lot. The wetlands is, uh, marked out. Distance setbacks, all my, uh, all the utilities are actually stubbed out right here in this corner controlled by, uh, drink water, or sewer and, um, and drinking water. And, uh, utility hole right here, CMP, uh, CMP hole nine. I've already talked to CMP. They will let me come off that hole. Keep everything on this side of the driveway, promote to the building. Keep it out of the way. Place for plow snow. Drainage thing over to the drainage easement that's on the, I guess that would be the south side of the property. Right-hand side of the road. All right, this drainage easement as well as the wetland thing is taken from the tax, the, the town map that we folded a copy of the subdivision plan.
Can you, I'm just trying to picture where, which lot this is, I'm having a hard time.
Next is the industrial part.
Yep.
That's right next to, uh, the boat place. Uh, what's it called?
Front Street Shipyard.
Front Street Shipyard is right here.
Oh, okay.
This is what was Dean Hope's building.
Yes.
It's now, um, pro form.
Yep.
So it's right here.
Okay.
And then 541 is the building that they're tearing apart right now.
Dave Mylan's building that we approved last year that was installed poorly and is being redone.
Really?
Yeah, they got all the siding off it so far. Piled roofing off.
Wow, okay.
They got it off, you said?
What's that?
Wouldn't you say about it?
They had, they had the roof off.
Metal siding and insulation taken off, and I think they're taking the roofing off as well, but they had the sideboards off when I was there.
It leaks, like I said, the people that installed it did it wrong.
A leak from the ceiling.
That's a good start.
The company is standing behind it and paying to have a new crewer in and do it right. So it's still holding up Dave and costing him money, but at least he's not having to pay to fix the building.
Okay.
Last time I was up there, the building was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, now they're tearing it down. All the red irons, the only thing left, I think. They took all the insulation, rolled off several dumpsters up there.
That's, that's the first little building that's gone off. I've yet, that really seems kinda strange in today's world. They would do something that would require taking that.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but.
Okay.
So this is, uh.
What was the setback for wetlands?
For wetlands?
Yeah, the 70 here, but there's 56 there, so I was wondering what the setback was. Is it 70?
I don't know that there is a specific setback, as long as he's not messing with them.
Good question. I honestly don't.
The, the DEP told me, not about this project, but about another project.
Yeah.
That as long as you're not disturbing more than, uh, what's 43 times 60, so 4,356 square feet of wetlands, then it doesn't, uh, there is no actual setback from that. As long as you're not disturbing more than that, and then that changes the.
That's 40.
Interesting.
Right, it's a 10% of an acre for 4,356.
Oh, 10% of an acre, okay, that's ridiculous.
It was when they told me, they told me it was 40, 4,356. I thought that was an odd number and then.
Gotcha.
Once I got rid of, when I got thinking it through, that's 10% of one acre.
Right.
So as long as you're not disturbing more than that, uh, and the entire project isn't in a lot.
Right.
Now, the snow removal area, that's where you plow the snow too.
Yeah.
But then it all runs back down. Is that right? To the drainage?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they should actually divert, there'll be a ditch out here on the side of the road, so some of this is actually going to run up to the block through the cover over to the drainage easement. I guess that is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, just, it seems like then you've got all that.
That doesn't make sense. You're right.
I mean.
I, I foresee most of the snow. I foresee most of the snow actually being plowed toward the drainage easement.
Okay.
Just this here, so you could swing and develop a plow that up out of the way.
And you've got the parking area by the big building, which.
Okay, do we have any more questions? What do we, what are you looking for from us on this tonight, Luke? This is just our preliminary site plan review.
No, I'm just, I mean, there's just not much to it. It's not something where we're, you know, processing, it's, it's a garage where he stores his electrical equipment and runs his business out of, so there's no bad solid waste or odors or really much of anything like some of the other stuff up there that we've had to spend a lot of time considering, I think this is kinda straightforward.
Any heat or anything like that being put to these buildings?
To the big building, yes, I will heat that. The small building is actually more for conduit racks, that type stuff.
Makes sense, yep.
He's not gonna, are you gonna have septic system, or is that town?
It's town, other water sewer.
I see P O F R, but then I don't see any on septic system, so I was a little confused.
In the heated building, you're gonna have a bathroom facility?
Yes. Yeah, an office, a small office, roughly, well, by 16 will be an office space of that, and then they'll be finished off sheet rock and everything, and the rest of it will be open space, they'll be finished off with something, plump of plywood on the inside walls.
So, will you just be having material there, or will you actually be putting in, like, putting in services?
Well, I, I will have material in the small building, and in the big building, I will store my equipment, but also have a prefab facility and a panel shop to build, like, septic pump control panels.
Be a busy.
Anyway, so that sounds good, well, that was, thank you for coming to Bucksport, that's great to have, and good to see businesses going up there.
I actually moved to Bucksport two years ago, actually, I live in Bucksport, moved up here two years ago, next week.
Great.
Bringing a few more.
So, honestly, this is something that, you know, and in this case, it's required to come to you folks for approval.
Yep.
I think it's basic enough that I could've done it, but I brought it to you guys for approval, so if you don't have any concerns, I would just ask for you guys to follow through with the vote, but if you have concerns or questions, certainly bring those forward.
Okay, you have no concerns at all?
I have no concerns, it's a pretty, pretty simple little project.
I think the things we typically look at in something like this is solid waste disposal, look at any kind of fumes or exhausts or anything of that nature, as to how those will be in handle, I mean, at a, kind of a minimum, we have to look at those things.
Are there any other businesses that are parallel to his that we have done the findings of fact for in the past, or the threshold for what his requires is so far below that?
The only thing I can think of would be Dean Hope's building when it was originally built, but that was like in the, what, 90s?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
I'm not worried about that, okay.
Everything else has been, like, you know, the Berry Septic, or Greenhead Lobster, Pennequid Muscle, Cold Storage, all places that have things that are of concern,
Active.
that need to be reviewed and looked at.
Okay.
You're not planning on a lot of employees or anything, just you and maybe one or two?
Yeah, I'd like to have a few employees, or you know.
So, he's got adequate parking?
Yeah, it's not gonna be any kind of retail, or, you know, customer or anything like that, it would be just us.
So, unless you guys think of something I'm not thinking of, I didn't see any issues.
Typically, like, this feels like they have a grading on it, but not, so make sure we're getting rid of water and throwing things.
I honestly do feel like we have, I'm not trying to hold your project up at all, but I just honestly feel like we have seen more for some of these before a new building has come through in the past. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, George, but I think we usually see more of a site plan review.
Site plan, elevation of the building, usually. So, you got some idea of what's happening?
Is that something that the board feels that, that we need or not? I have all the confidence in the world in Luke's ability to pay attention to this.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm good at the moment, I understand what's going on. Luke, you know this location very well, so whiz dumps are gonna be?
Um, I don't think I'm gonna have a dumpster there.
Really? Wow. Okay, transfer station, all right.
Well, well, that, all the material is, it will go into the dumpster on the job.
The job. Well, that's a good answer then, that's a good answer, all right, I can follow that. I think, though, the chairman and George bring up a good point on drainage, but Luke is comfortable with this, it's a small project, it's not a big project. I'm comfortable with Luke's assessment on this thing.
Agreed. So, would the board like to make a motion to accept this project as presented, or do we need to?
I'll make a motion to accept the project as presented, with Luke as the official.
All in favor? All right, very good, sir, thank you very much.
Thank Luke.
All right, well, he just said, you're a little combinator. All right, moving on, under new business, section B, site plan review, new cafe, The Crumpet, Billings and Stir, 81 Main Street. Come on up and give us all the good news.
So, this is, a little background, this is where Huckleberry's was, on Main Street.
Yep.
It was a bakery when I was a kid, so this.
Yeah.
Flower bin food, stuff in there before, but the ordinance says that all restaurants have to come to the planning board, so, actually, yeah, we did nutrition
Yep.
last month, because again, that was considered a restaurant. This one is a, is a small scale restaurant, but it is a restaurant, so they didn't have a lot to provide for you, so I gave you what they gave me, but at the same time, when I first looked at it, I thought, well, there's, there must be more that I need from them, but I went down through the checklist, and I mean, it's, it's an existing building, it's, there's really not much to it, other than what they're doing in there, so with that, I'll let them explain what they're doing, and you can ask your questions.
Are you taking? Thank you, George and Mr. Chairman, but, you know, I think we're happy to answer any questions people might have, but our plans are fairly simple, and I think, like you say, it's gonna be returning the property to some usage that was previously recognized by the town as having some value. We bought the property about five years ago, and we certainly have had hopes to contribute to the community of Bucksport in some way, and the owners of Huckleberry chose not to continue the lease this past February, then we basically moved on a plan that we had been keeping on the shelf for a few years of opening up a very small, modest cafe slash event space, and our hope is to basically have something that would be available for the public, particularly, we find it very difficult to get food in this community, Sunday afternoons, Mondays, Tuesdays, sometimes Wednesdays, depending on which month it is.
Oh, you do big business on a Monday, Sunday, oh yeah.
So, we actually originally modified our business plan, because we were thinking of, of doing the usual open Wednesday through, through Saturday, and I was like, no, that's not what the community needs, so we're shifting, at this point, our plan is for it to be Sunday through Wednesday or Thursday, depending on our staffing, we are hoping to hire a couple of folks to help us with the project, but.
Yeah, and I'd just say that we've done some renovations, we have all new electrical work, we have all new plumbing, I've taken the safety food course, so that I know about the hand washing sinks, you know, and all the details seem to be falling into place as far as the structure of the building, we're trying to keep the, the old floor and, you know, the tin ceiling and things that give it character, this is, we recognize it's really historic, you know, it's part of that historic block, and we wanna keep that sort of historic flavor to it, so we've done a lot of renovating inside, but, you know, we put the permits in for all that, there was a floor plan, but I don't know if you have a copy, yeah.
Yeah, we all have.
Well, that's, that's just the, the actual building, but, you know, the, the way it's all laid out, when I, when we applied for the permits, we had to submit those, so Luke's been over there a couple of times, checking on our progress.
He'd probably be over there even more often. Well, we hope so.
Yeah.
Might have a table with his name on it.
We're going to hire out bakers, we're not gonna actually have a real kitchen back there, but we're gonna do sandwiches and soups, and then bring in the pastries from maybe Edward's Kitchen and a couple of different people.
Local, yeah.
We've contacted local coffee roasters and tea people in Winterport, so, you know, we've been trying to line up local people to provide stuff.
Will we be dining in, or will it be just like a takeout?
Oh, yeah, we, we've applied for a license, restaurant license for 29 seats,
Lowest level.
which is the tier one, they call it, smallest.
Yeah.
But it's quite comfortable in there, I mean, that's not crowded in there.
Yeah, we put in a handicap access, so.
We have an ADA bathroom. Bathroom for the public and.
Not that it matters here, but like, your hours of operation, are you like breakfast, lunch, will you be open in the evenings, or?
We're leaning more towards the lunch crowd, and maybe one evening a week for some kind of event, maybe Wednesdays on the main.
Wednesdays is, we're leaning towards there, because we've even talked to some of the board for the Alamo.
That looks kinda like it, yeah.
It's coming up.
Thank you, Luke.
Can't see the tables, they're, we just got them delivered, but.
That's the basic floor plan, with the two bathrooms, private and public, and then a sort of office slash kitchen area, and the storefront.
We, we could do some things in conjunction with the Alamo before their, serve, new productions or whatever, we could do something potentially early in the evening, but we're really not interested in the late night type of, we're too late for that.
Unless we get employees, which we're, we're gonna try to do it ourselves to get it going, and then see how it goes from there.
Is it handicap accessible?
Oh, no, just to finish up, there was a bakery across the street there.
The Friar.
The Simple Friars, yeah. No, not the Friars, it was on the other, where Simple Soul.
The building's gone, it's where Rice Glass was.
Oh, righty.
And they were open.
Right.
Like, they opened after I was at work, and they were closed before I got done with work, so, I mean, now, that was kinda my work. Occasionally, it was.
We're leaning more towards the early and then the lunch at this point. What time do you go to work?
What sort of events do you plan on, and is it gonna be for, like, for rent, or for grabs, for rent?
Well, we have, if I can with this, we have a piano in there,
Yeah.
and we'd like to be able to do just acoustic, you know, music early in the evening, and then some rotating art exhibits, and maybe cribbage tournaments.
Yeah, I like the idea of a cribbage tournament, Wednesday afternoons, but basically, we're gonna try to just buttress it with whatever's going on, like the Wednesday on the main, you know, afternoon on the main, whatever, do it, do some Wednesday early evening events.
Okay.
It said there was handicap accessible bathroom, is there gonna be a, I think there's a side door, right, is that gonna be your entrance for the?
No, the side door is unfortunately into the kitchen, private area.
It's not as easy to get in there, we, we do have a portable ramp that we've set up, and we brought things in that would go in the front.
Mandor.
Is that pretty much grandfathered anyways?
Yeah, I mean, that's, if you go up into Bangor and you look at like Patty Murphy's, that's what they do, it's unfortunate that that's the way it is, but it's an old building, and so, you know, somebody tells them, "I need assistance," or if you've got somebody with you, they can do it, but the ramp is right there, and the best of you are when you come into Patty Murphy's and they just set it down, and then, but they can't leave it out, because it would have struck the sidewalk if you tripped it in.
Yep.
So, it's, it's unfortunate, but your options are really limited when you're in a town like this with old buildings and existing sidewalks.
Thanks you did that bathroom, I'm understanding you have accessible, it's nice.
Well, I just wanna say, obviously, we have to move forward with this, because I Googled your location today. Yes, and, and Google has driven by, and your sign is showing already on Google. I was surprised by that today, when I took an extra minute to look it up, it's a nice sign on the outside of the building.
Banner City.
Yeah, it showed the new pavement, and I said, whoa.
Yeah.
You know, how'd you pay them to get that done so soon?
Well, Mr. Lambfer, no.
No, it's very nice.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or thoughts?
Appreciate you coming to Bucksport.
Well, look forward to seeing you.
We live in Orington, we'd like to move to Bucksport, and we find a good place, yeah.
Been there 32 years.
I'm not a board member, but what do you plan to do with your solid waste?
Good.
You mean trash?
Yeah.
I have spoken to Pine Tree, which is a branch of the casella, and that's what we're leaning towards right now.
Is there one back there for dumpster?
No, nothing, the dumpster, small.
Probably do the two, roll them out to the street.
Plastic rolling.
Yeah.
I had thought there was one there already.
I think it's on the side of the street, is in there.
There's one across the street.
Isn't there like an apartment size, like mini dumpster?
You can, well, we, we were talking to them, and we were thinking that the small plastic rolling might be useful, because we could throw it into the.
They're gonna come look at it and tell us, you know, what would fit back there. And then they just come by once a week. If it turns out that we have more than they can handle, then we'll get something figured out, I guess.
I don't know where they would go with that, they'd have to, what, go down towards the Alamo, or go across the street, I mean, where do you?
Behind the building is the only spot.
Next room back there.
There is room. The spot back there is a big tree, and then you can't see it, but there's a opening here that gets, goes down into their basement, so you wouldn't wanna block that, but, yeah, that's why I was like, I don't know where they'll put a dumpster.
Yeah, the platform that I built.
It could be extended.
Is about five feet by about eight feet, like a decking. Okay, does the board have any more comments, questions, do we?
Can we get a sample, I think?
I'm gonna say, they make some crumpets.
We're definitely gonna have some crumpets.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to accept the proposed project?
Make a motion to accept the proposed project.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, looking forward to it.
All right.
Crumpets and tea, huh?
Yes, moving on, administrative business, appendix K land use ordinance, review of proposed change to the downtown zone boundary, request to include Richard Peterson's property, map 32, lot 122.
Does that, buy, check your property?
Yes. So, if you look at his property right here, what I basically did with this line, can you see that up there, okay? I went across the back of the wooded property line, or the side of the wooded property, and across behind his house, and down that property line, which is the back of your neighbor there, I forget their name, looks like it's Storm.
Might be Lynn lives this.
So, I went, basically, I tried to make a straight line as I could across there, and then I just jagged around. and then I just jagged around that little lot, so that-
I think that's the, rather feeds the squirrels.
So, um-
Your next door neighbor.
Oh, he's not gonna get a business there, is he?
I don't think so.
Squirrel feeding business?
Yeah, and the skunks and the whatever. So, this is just something for us to, a starting point for us to look at, because nobody gave me anything specific. We were supposed to get together and talk about it.
But that's what we're really talking about.
Yeah, and we had discussed whether a property could be in two zones, and the reality is that lots of properties are in two zones, especially when it comes to shoreline zone, resource protection, and then whatever major zone they are. And, and properties that are within a thousand feet of Route fifteen or Route forty-six are in the, are one development corridor, but beyond a thousand feet, you're outside that. So, you've got properties that are half and half there, so.
These aren't taxed differently, are they?
No.
Okay.
No, so, um-
Yes?
No, they are not.
What?
So, no.
I mean, if it's-
To go live or what?
If, if to be in the purple is to be taxed lower, then I would love it.
So, Dick had mentioned that he didn't need his whole lot to be in that zone, 'cause to me, the next logical step would be to go up and include the wing house, the back of Dick's property, and your property. That would be, but, you know, we'd just keep creeping further and further back.
That's all you could be doing.
And I don't know if it's necessary, so.
I don't feel it's necessary.
But I really would love to-
Well, I just feel like, why, why wouldn't you? Then split up a property in the middle of, you've got a nice piece of property there with a-
But it's not needed to-
Well, I'm not dividing it, I'm just dividing the zone.
That's probably the largest in-town lot.
Yeah, but if somebody wanted to build up back there.
They still can.
They still, they could build a home.
But what if they wanna put a gathering?
They'd have to, they'd have to come here.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
No, I don't care, I really don't.
No, no, I think, I think you raise a good question. I'm not supposed to really, I'm, I'm answering as if I'm out here.
I just say that that's a nice piece of property there.
Yes.
And if somebody decided to put like-
We were very fortunate to get that property, yes.
I don't know, like a bandstand or something, and they wanted to have outdoor garden gatherings.
I don't think my next-to-a-neighbor would really like that.
I don't care.
As long as you're playing there.
They'll hire him.
No, no, it's, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Gazebow with electricity, yes.
If you start holding like Phish concerts up there, it's, I mean, then, then I might take objection, but, um, well.
Does, does this-
It's like a garden, garden party with a string quartet, I don't care.
Does this proposed boundary line meet what you wanted it to accomplish? Does this work?
Yes.
Does this work for everybody?
It works. It works. And we're, I would never have gone forward with it, but now I'm there. So, and in order to do what I'd like to do, I didn't realize really until Luke read.
So, you were talking about like drone clubs?
Yeah, some kinda club, some, whatever I wanna do for meetings and things.
So, you wouldn't be like giving how to fly drones in that big backyard?
No, I thought about that, and I said, "Mark will not really appreciate that." No, if I was going to do that, I'd be taking it and saying, "Okay, we're gonna go out to a field somewhere," you know, "or down to the marina," something like that.
Is this, is this week four this has been on our, uh, excuse me, month four that this has been on our-
Well, no, because we made a change.
Yeah.
And that's been approved by the council.
Yeah.
That moved the line up to the front of, of his property here.
Yeah.
Now-
So, this, this was approved?
That was approved.
Oh, okay. That's, that was my question, because it said this was existing, and I said, "Well, as far as I know, it didn't exist."
No, we appro, we approved that, sent it to the council.
It's been approved.
And the council approved it, and it was public hearing and everything at the council level.
If he wanted to run a club out of his house, that would maybe not, not a profit or just like-
We could buy a trailer one day.
I mean, you don't need to have a business zoning to that, for that, right?
You need to be in town to do, to do that.
To run a club? Like, if you just wanted to like, "Anybody who likes to fly drones, let's get together and do it."
No, I mean, I could have a club at my house if I wanted to, but if it's official, like a, if it's a meeting house-
And that's, right.
Then that's-
And I have plenty of parking.
Where you could hang up a sign and, and basically do business.
Right.
Like, for instance, the Chamber of Commerce used to have a actual business location that people could come and, and visit, and that's one of the things we've talked about over.
It, it, you never know, but I can tell you that it's probably not gonna happen. But at the same time, we have to talk about what are the options that we might have available. And after you read, I can't, I can't even do some of the things I thought I could do by building that big area. The area that I have is not quite as high, but-
Well, Mark is, nobody's gonna come and shut you down because you're having ten friends over that all fly drones and-
Well, no, I, if that's the case, I'll probably-
But if you start a website that's advertising, "Learn how to fly drones and, and whatnot, and have a business there," then yes, you need to.
Well, and it's, and it's only growing, and you may not be aware of just how fast it's growing. And I could see myself having a club, a business, training. I've already started the process with some others, but not there, but I can see that happening.
Based on what we did with the previous boundary line, and where his property is so closely situated to it, I see no reason why we shouldn't just extend the boundary line to include it. Does anyone else have any other thoughts?
Like this, not the whole, not even his entire property?
Correct. His, what Luke proposed with his, with his line, what he just described to us.
You want me to pull it up?
Yes, please.
Proposed zoning. So, this is Dick Peterson's property here, and this is your property, Mark.
Correct.
And I came across, oh, I thought I included that.
No, you didn't, that's good. That's good.
It was fifty-fifty.
That's even better.
Well, yeah, it's either gonna zig up or zig down, or whatever.
Yeah. So, I zig and down.
Yeah, I would agree with Steve. We've definitely discussed this out, all that could have been discussed, and I, I see no need to push it any further. I guess that's it. Go for it.
I will make this proposal to the council, then. It'll be this Thursday, 'cause it's too late to be on their agenda, but there's no huge hurry anyways, right?
Okay.
So, I, I have one other that I'd like to discuss with you.
Okay.
If you've got, if anybody's dying to leave.
We're here for you.
So, as you know, solar has been a hot topic, and we had, had been approached by a company about solar, and we knew it was somewhere out near, out behind Spring Fountain. That's all they told us. We didn't know exactly where. And rather than bring it to the planning board, I talked with Sue, and I said, "Can we just go directly to the council and get their feeling on a contract zone before I waste the planning board's time having meetings, review, public hearings, and all of that, just for the council to then say, 'No, we're not gonna do contract zone' like they did before?" She thought that was a smart idea, so they did that, and the council said, "No, we're not interested." They were very clear about it. Well, about a month and a half ago, something like that, Luanne Wasson, I don't know how many of you know her. She owns this piece of lot, land here that I have highlighted, and it's deep, it goes way back.
Oh.
And this land, this is the, this is the industrial park here.
Is that where the house was tore down between the Spring Fountain and Glenn's Place?
No.
No, okay.
It's further down.
Okay, it's further over.
This is the intersection of forty-six, this is Terriers right here.
Oh, yes, okay.
The horse farm, she owns the horse farm.
Gotcha.
And the proposed solar was back in here where nobody would see it.
Yeah.
Kinda like this ugly graveyard of equipment that Wardwell has there. So, um-
I didn't even know that equipment was there.
Yeah, exactly.
That's awful necessary.
So, she is struggling to pay her taxes.
Okay.
And wants to do this so that she doesn't lose her land.
So, she would lease her land?
She would lease the area where the solar would be to them, and have some money coming in, and she could retire, and she could keep her farm. And so, she came to the council, and she said, "I want you guys to explain to me why you won't let me do this." And there was really no answer, other than Mr. Stewart said, "Well, it's not zoned for that, so you can't do it." And she said, "But we could do a contract zone, and they're not interested in that." So, she's been talking to me about what are our options. One option is, we've got an election coming up in November, and it might be a different council, might feel different about contract zones. Another option would be to change the land use ordinance to allow solar. It's, right now, it's only allowed in the industrial zone. This is C2, commercial two. We could change it to be allowed in commercial two and the industrial zone. And just so that you get a feel for what commercial two looks like, I'm gonna turn that zone on. So, this, everything you see here in this pink, the red is C3, that's the industrial park, and the yellow is, um-
Growth?
Yes, I think that's-
Yep. Am I looking at the right, am I looking at the right map?
Uh-
'Cause this is the growth area here.
Yeah, that's where he's screening, and it looks like that's purple.
Yeah, I know. I know what it looks like. I'm just, so I'm trying to get right around here, see how that goes around.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yours is green, and I think on this screen is purple.
Yes, right. And so, I think it's this map here, yeah, right here.
But you've got like, what is-
And all I know is that this area here is designated as the growth area. That's the one where if a subdivision did go in, it has to be underground and sidewalks and, and land set aside.
I could be wrong, but I believe, let me pull up-
And you, and you're probably right. I just-
So, the yellow is RG, which is residential growth. So, on this map, the yellow is residential growth.
Yeah.
Really?
The pink over here, this is C-
Oh, rural growth. Sorry, rural growth.
Yeah.
Is the green.
Right.
Here.
And on this one, it's yellow.
I-
See the legend over here, where it says RG?
I burned that right off our site.
Yeah, I don't know. Is that part of the comp plan or something?
Yeah, it's a comprehensive plan for the, in other words, so I can understand rural, which we have two districts.
That says two thousand seventeen draft copy.
And then the growth.
So, that might not be the official final.
Oh, you might be right.
I don't know, but-
Neither do I. Okay, I just thought of pointing it out.
We're not gonna decide anything tonight anyways.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a feel for how you would feel about potentially changing C2 to allow solar.
Currently, it's bordered by woods?
Um, well, it's bordered by the RG, which is the residential growth area. Um, and it's bordered by, this is Bayview Drive over here, so-
The zone zone?
Uh, no, it's in Village. It's kinda isolated by these others, but it's both sides of this. This is C1, this light pink.
That's where that land is.
This is Park Street. This is Family Dollar down here, and these are all the lots that are for sale, and this was just completed.
But it abuts where the, um, park is, right? Where it's already allowed to have an industrial park created. This land abuts that?
It, it abuts the industrial park, but it also abuts the residential growth, not her lot, but the C2 zone. And the C2 zone also abuts Bayview. Um-
So, why not move the zone or, well, never mind. You guys could just change that one.
The industrial park is not an industrial zone. It's not allowed.
No, it's C3.
Solar's not allowed in the industrial park. That's C3.
Right.
Only mill area, former mill area.
Yeah, down here is industrial zone.
Thank you, Rich, our development director. Thank you.
I misunderstood what you were saying. I apologize.
Fine. So, this is just, I just wanted to get your feeling on-
I don't like it.
Luke, if you, if you can answer this question, is, is the issue contract zoning, or is the issue solar?
Well, I think that, from understanding-
Well, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, you're, you're trying to make it so that she can put a solar farm there, or at least apply to put a solar farm in there, in order for us to make that change.
Yes, and that's where my question is, is the issue-
My issue and my thought process with this, if you look at Park Street up and behind Family Dollar, where all that is, that whole area, literally, it's the growth zone. And the idea is for that to grow with houses and to become developed.
Understood.
And that, what, it's, what she's-
And I would be concerned with it being near Bayview.
It's right in the-
They're not gonna wanna look at that.
And the industrial park and all of that, that whole area is converging in and developing.
Yeah, so I think, in my mind, this is perfect example of a spot where contract zoning makes sense. But they-
For solar?
For this, because you could allow it on her property only, and not the whole C2 zone. But the council has made it clear, they don't want to approve a contract zone.
So, no matter what we say, they, they're going to not change.
Only for a contract zone, unless we, unless we change the whole zone.
They're saying it's not zoned for that.
Well, they said, no, they said no to solar, based on when pushed, they said, "It's not, we're against solar, we're not against solar, we're against contract zone." But then when we pushed on, uh, contract zone for other things, they're like, "Well, it has a place and whatever, but we don't think that it makes sense for something that's, um, not a big benefit to the town." But, and, and it's not a big benefit. I, I will gladly admit, it's not a big benefit to the town. But, we would make more than we're making now, because it's in tree growth right now, so she would be taking it out of that.
And she can keep her property.
And she gets to keep her property, so it helps the land.
How much area of that are we talking?
I would assume it's another one of these twenty acres, five kilowatts, 'cause that's about as big as you can get without doing a solar program.
My question, if I was the backpedal, would be, is this conforming to what's happening in that area, and is it gonna stunt future growth?
Well, right now, what we have is nothing happening in that area.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have that land with all the leftover equipment in there.
Yeah.
Okay, that, nothing's happening with that.
Yeah.
How do we, you know, the solar, build a road, and next thing we know, we can do other things? I mean, I'm just trying to think about how we can make this, clean, clean up the area, and at the same time, get something going up in there.
Yeah. I really don't know. I just know that this lady wants help.
Do you, do you have thoughts, Rich, on this?
Yeah, Rich, would you step in, step up here and approach the board and give us your thoughts?
I have a question. What is the negative part of, of the solar? What is the name, the island with it? 'Cause it's on Main Street.
Well, no, this wouldn't be visible from above.
It's gonna be in the woods.
But you tend, there's a bunch of solar power on Main.
Oh, right, I see what you're saying.
No, I, I think you're looking at maybe inhibiting future growth, if you take up twenty acres of solar panels, which aren't going to be generating a lot of, you know, tax income, business, what, what have you. I, I think that that's, that's the objection, is amount of acreage you might lose to potential future development. But anyway, we, we did ask, but-
But it's, but it is her property.
Correct.
And Mike, and I'm just concerned about stunting future growth. That's where my head's at at this time.
Which is why I was wondering what you think.
Well, my understanding is, so this is the CMP transmission line, right here, and his amusement, my, from my recollection of talking to her after the council meeting, is that would be back in that direction there. My thing is, if I was in your position, if I was in the council's position, if someone comes to me every time that they're behind on their taxes, I'm gonna make a decision, "Well, I want them to keep their land, I want them to keep their house, let's allow them to do whatever they want." So, if they wanna put a solar farm, and that's gonna save their property, I don't think that's thinking in the best interest of the town as a whole, versus what's to say if Dick doesn't wanna do that on his property, and he comes to you and says, "I want a contract doesn't wanna do that on his property, he comes to you and says, I want a contract zone and put solar panels so I can keep my property, my house, everything that I've done, I would make the decision on the best sound judgment for the community as well. And that doesn't mean that the community has to make hand over fist because someone's gonna put a solar panel there, but if the thought is, there's nothing ever gonna happen on that land, it's by the CMP transmission line, everything around it is either, it's growing, so no, or it's not growing, so yes, or maybe it'll help future provide power possibly to the cold storage or the vacant part of land. I would just be very careful in doing something because someone's asking for help, because if you open that can of worms, you may be looking at that in the future from everybody. And if you say no to one, yes to one, you gotta have a good reason to say-
I feel like we've been-
No to the other.
Been stepping on the door of doing that a lot lately with a lot of the, I mean, we've been doing a lot of things through one and trying to get things opened up and positioned so we can grow in a responsible way. And with change and growth, like, these things are necessary, but-
Has anyone talked to her about maybe selling that land from her easement, from the CMP easement back to some of the abutters?
I think she wants to save her, keep her land, that's her point.
Well, I know, but-
Well, she could give a, does she use that all, all the way back there? There's a lot of land. I mean, if she's not using that-
Listen, I'm just throwing ideas out there. If she has-
My point with that is, she's got all that property and it's gonna be in the back
as opposed to if Dick wanted to put all that. It's more in town, so it's not visible. So if somebody wants to put solar, they would have to have something comparable to what the lady has.
But Dick's not building anything that doesn't already exist, right? So there's not, that's not changing.
Well, no, he was just showing like if, you know, say Dick wanted to put solar on his, you know, just because she wants it to save her house, Dick wants to put it, save his house. I think it would have to be location, too.
That zone is what again?
It's currently C two.
C two. So is what she wants conforming to that zone?
Who are the abutters?
Not right now. The only place that solar's allowed is industrial.
That's what I mean.
What can she do with that property?
It doesn't conform.
Just houses?
No.
She can't do that right now. She can't do that right now because she's in tree growth, right?
Well, it could be taken out of the tree.
She'd have to take it out.
It's just a ruin to win.
Okay, so she's in tree growth, we'll lower her taxes, I mean, so that's what that's all about.
In ten years?
Yes.
Everything is going great and it's, see, your wildest dream, what's that land gonna look like in ten years?
More housing.
Up there? So, so she will sell off housing lots.
Well, or-
And somebody will put a road in and-
Well, not necessarily on that piece of land, but in that area.
No, possibly on that land. If he's saying in ten years, you know-
Yeah, everything's going great and people are flocking in and, you know, um, this is like a new place.
What I'm saying is, she sold that land, I don't know who's the skinny, skinny piece between her and the growth section, but even if she wanted to keep some of her land and sell the back part to save, she still has a ton of land there. And that would be a way to keep her, some of her land. I mean, obviously I want her to do whatever she can to keep her land, but like you said, you can't just keep going, oh, yeah, poof, here you go, poof, here you go, we'll have all these.
To answer your question, what's allowed in C two? Hotels, motels, recreational lodging, um, product distribution facilities, um, communication facilities, uh, freight terminals.
Freight terminals?
Sounds like pedestrian, right?
Adult family care, housing, daycare centers, dormitories, dwelling units.
Dwelling units meaning houses?
Doesn't seem like those are compatible uses.
Well, here's the other issue with that zone is, um-
Yeah, so it could be houses.
Yeah.
Could be businesses, could be houses.
Across the street from that zone, the town has solar at the wastewater treatment.
Healthcare facilities. I mean, this, the sky's the limit, schools, I mean, this-
Almost anything.
Almost anything. C two is a very open zone.
Except solar.
Except solar. And I'm not saying it's the right thing for it, I'm just trying to get your opinions 'cause she called me today and, and I said I would talk to you guys about it.
So what she needs to do is build a hotel with solar panels on the roof.
Well, well, Luke, Luke and I spoke, here's the other thing that we believe may be an issue in this, is that solar falls under, uh, power generation. And at one point, the AES project was a very hot topic.
Yeah.
And I don't know I wasn't here when these ordinance was written, but was it kept into that because of that project solely into the industrial zone? Have we not been forward-thinking as a community about power generation outside of that zone for purposes of, we just don't wanna deal with and go back down that road again?
Right.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know. But I will say there's two things working against us or, or with us, however you wanna look at it.
Yeah.
One, the town has solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
On the other end, we're seeing a lot of growth in that area.
Yeah. I would hate to see us make the wrong move and stunt-
Well, y'all just think on it.
Stunt future housing.
What's the treatment? Is that an industrial and well treatment plan?
Uh, no.
That is-
No, it's, what it is, is it's a, um, it's an auxiliary or an ancillary structure. So the primary, so that goes to reduce the cost of the sewer treatment, if I'm not mistaken, right? It's an ancillary use.
It was permitted as an accessory use.
Accessory.
It only offsets power for that facility and it doesn't generate power as a money-making.
Don't we have some more on the-
Town garage. That does the same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah, they're access, they're accessory uses.
If you wanted to put it on your roof, I could allow that as an accessory use, but if you wanted to put in hundred panels and generate power for the whole street, I can't allow that.
Could be a cluster of development.
Yeah, so the current zone for that is Route one shoreline.
Okay, well, thank you, Rich. Um, I think we're, thank you for that, Luke. Yep. We'll talk about that more later. We have section eight, a limited public forum, an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucks Board. We'll open the limited public forum. And the phone is not ringing and no one has anything to say, so we will close the limited public forum and then we will move on to discussion. Does anyone have discussion topics? All right, moving on. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor? Very good.
Great.
Yep.[1775.12]